That was it. Take your chips.
It's 5:45. Call the meeting's order announced, we do have a quorum. Donna, you want to introduce the first part here?
I do. So, we have two presentations for you tonight, counsel, both related to our bond program. So, the first one, it will be by Jason Hughes, who we've worked with from First Southwest. He wants to talk to you a little bit about, you know, overview of the bond program, our own bonds, but also the Castle Hill program. And then Gina's going to take it over. She and Brenda have been working diligently since the election passed, and we were successful in getting our geo-bond program laid out. And so, what we've done there is to look at overall capital plan. So, we've laid out the geo-bond program, but also many of your capital projects are being accomplished through resources other than geo-bonds. So, your certificates of obligation, your tax anticipation notes and such, and so we're going to lay out the whole capital program. What I want is for you just to consider it tonight. We're not asking for any action. So, it's a time for you to look at staff's thoughts on how those projects will lay out. We'll bring it back to you in January and be able to talk in more detail after you have some time to look for it. With that, I'm going to extend it over to you, Jason.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure if this is a Christmas gift or a lump of coal, I guess it'll seem, so... But again, Jason Hughes of First Southwest, it's good to be back with you tonight. As Donna said, I have a presentation to go over the debt and credit position, not only the city, we'll talk about your geo and also about the water and sewer, but also about the Castle Hills district. This is really for your benefit, I mean informational items, so certainly as I'm going through this, if you have any questions or if you'd like for me to stop before we go into more detail, please let me know, and I'd be happy to do that. One thing that I thought I might start with is just, before we get to the slides, is just talk a little bit about what I do. And I've been working now with the city going on 16 to 17 years, which is the time I've been at First Southwest, too. So, as financial advisor, what I'm really trying to do is make sure on the debt issuance side of taking any kind of debt issuance, really from the start to the finish. And so, starting out with understanding you as a city, what you want to do, the capital that you need. And that typically involves sitting down with staff or in some cases with council as well, but finding out how much you want to do and marrying that up to the revenues that you have available to repay that debt service. Once we kind of develop that plan of finance and I'm working with your staff in putting together preliminary official statement, the offering document, but also working together with other professionals such as bond counsel, they're making sure that you don't run afoul of any state laws or any federal tax laws. And then the other main component are the rating agencies, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. So, as far as the debt issue, I really have three goals as your financial advisor. I'm trying to make sure that I maximize the proceeds or get all the proceeds that you need. I'm trying to make sure that that's at the cheapest cost of capital, which in turn means the least impact to your citizens, to your rate payers. And then that last component is really one that's kind of overlooked sometimes. We're trying to maintain future flexibility, and again, I'll talk about that a little bit. The other thing that I do as financial advisors can do, some of the other matters, economic development, and then also any kind of districts you may have, whether it be a TERS, a tax increment, reinvestment zone, which you have, or a public improvement district, the PIDs, again, which Castle Hills are. So, that's really what I'm doing in the financial advisor capacity. One thing that I want to make very clear that you understand is I represent only the city, because I work as financial advisor only to the city. My fiduciary responsibility is to the city and to the city alone. Castle Hills, while I do review their financings, while I've been involved in rating presentations, while I review the documents, I do not serve as Castle Hills financial advisor. So, again, I am working for you. So, this information I'm about to go through is really meant to be kind of the initial presentation to council, and I think what staff, what we've talked about, is really having an annual review. So, this is certainly the initial. As we go through this or maybe later on, if there's other items you'd like for me to cover, then please let me know. So, the first item here, as far as the type of debt that you issue, tax-backed debt, I'll start with the certificates of obligation. By state law, tax or certificates of obligation are secured by INS tax revenues and a pledge of surplus revenues. And typically, for most cities, that's from their water and sewer system, that's what you've secured yours with. The one thing, though, that's very important to notice there is debt service can be repaid with any lawfully available revenues. So, in the case of the 2007A, those are actually repaid with 4B revenues. The 2007B COs that we issued are from TERS revenues. Excuse me. So, certificates of obligation by state law can only be used for new money purposes. We cannot use that to refinance any of your existing debt. And that term is dependent on the project being financed. So, again, the 2007A, which I believe that was for the athletic complex, that was a 25-year term, again, 4B revenues repaying that debt service, and you can see how much is outstanding on that, well over $6 million. And then for the 2007B, which was for the arts activity center, about $1.9 million outstanding, and that was a 20-year initial term. As I said, you can only use COs for new money. In 2015, we actually issued refunding bonds to refund a portion of those COs for savings. One thing that we do is we make sure that we keep that segregated, so you as council, you as staff know, again, exactly what items you have that are tied, whether it be 4B revenues or TERS revenues. And as you can see there, 4B, that's about $8 million and about $4.7 million for the TERS. Now, the geo-bonds, this is typically what you issue the most of, going back, I believe there was 98 bond elections in 2003, which we wrapped up all of that, new money authorization in 2013. Now, these are secured solely by INS tax revenues. Once again, they can, you can use any lawfully available revenues to repay that debt service. You as a city have used INS tax revenues historically. As I said, they can be issued for new money and/or refunding as well. Typically, we look at any kind of refundings whenever we're doing our new money issuances to achieve some economies of scale. And then the city has historically issued and amortized that debt over 16 years. So, you have a rapid repayment, that's much more rapid than most cities either do a 20 or even a 25-year term. So, that's good that you've been able to do that over 16 years. And as you can see there, about $77.6 million outstanding. The one other item I didn't include here, but Donna mentioned it, are tax notes or tax anticipation notes. These are simply short-term notes, seven-year maximum maturity, again, per state law. They can be issued for the same things that geo-bonds can be issued for or COs, and they're secured by taxes and revenues. The last bullet point there, as far as the credit ratings, going back to 2011, Standard and Poor's has rated you as a AAA as well as Fitch. AAA, again, that is the highest credit rating that you can achieve. So, on the following page here, you see I included just a graph of the general obligation debt. One thing you notice is obviously how it does decrease pretty substantially. What we've always done is every year, we've looked at how much can be issued and tried to quote-unquote "fill" that in. So, in other words, as you see that this goes down, in 2017, we'll issue there and just kind of do it like that to fill that in with the goal of maintaining a constant INS tax rate. For as long as I can remember, your INS tax rate's been approximately 11.732 cents. And again, what we've really done is tried to maintain that as much as possible. As for your issuance of the newly voted debt, 135 million, one of the things, at least annually, if not semi-annually, that I look at along with your staff is how much debt can be issued on an annual basis. And again, we carry that out over 10 years. So, for the latest projections, again, using or taking into account that 135 million, we've grown the taxable assessed valuation, but we've grown it for 10 years off. Again, just trying to be very conservative in those projections. We've also included the absorption of certain Castle Hills districts at certain times that can be changed as necessary, but given what we know now, what we're kind of planning, we've taken that into account. And then you can see there, as far as the annual issuances, what is currently projected is about 75.4 million over the first five years, and then in the last five years, about 59.6 million. One thing I would point out, just like with your 2003 bond election, those can change, obviously, whether its values grow more than expected, values don't grow, kind of like what we saw in 2008, 2009, as much as expected. Those can shift, and that's part of what we're looking at on an annual, if not a semi-annual basis. But as it stands right now, the last run that I had run, that was kind of what we had mapped out there. As with your existing geo-debt, 16-year terms, we're not stretching out the debt any over what you typically do. Given these assumptions, that maximum INS tax rate impact is one penny. So, like I said, your current INS tax rate's 11.732 cents. We would anticipate a maximum tax rate of 12.732 cents, again, given the assumptions that we have here. The one thing to point out is that one penny increase, as it's modeled now, would actually occur next fiscal year. So, that would be fiscal year 1617, your next upcoming budget year in which you would institute, once we sell the debt, you would institute that one cent increase. And then, again, just like with the 2003, the entire voted authorization will be completed within 10 years, and you certainly have the capacity to do that. So, that is the geo-debt. So, let me next go to the water and sewer debt. Water and sewer revenue bonds are issued, as the name implies, for water and sewer improvements to your system. They're secured solely with the net revenues of the system, so it's not considered as strong of a pledge as an annual tax that you, council, have the ability to set. The water and sewer revenue bonds can be issued for new money and/or refunding, again, just like with the geo, we look at refundings whenever we're issuing the new money bonds. And just like with the geo-bonds, you amortize that over 16-year term. One thing I would point out, that 16 years applies only to the new money. If we have a refunding that we're doing and there's only 10 years left on that refunding, then we only amortize it over 10 years. In other words, we don't stretch out your debt whenever we look at that refinancing. And as you can see there, just under $45 million outstanding. As far as the related items, credit ratings, again, you're AAA, highest credit rating you can achieve by both S&amp;P, which had occurred in 2011, and by Fitch, which they rated you a AAA in 2013. Those net revenues of your water and sewer system are based on two primary factors, which are consumer usage as well as weather. So, since it is a more volatile revenue stream, there are certain safeguards that are put into place for bondholders. As you can see there, debt service reserve fund, which would be used to make your payment in the event that you, the city, cannot make a timely principal and interest payment, is included, and that's typically, that's equal to the average annual debt service. Then you also have what's known as additional bonds tests. So, anytime we go to issue additional water and sewer revenue bonds, we have to make sure that their net revenues are greater than 1.25 times the average annual debt service or 110, the maximum annual debt service. To give you an idea, whenever we issued the bonds this past year, the average annual debt service coverage was about 3.5 times, and the maximum coverage was about 2.0 times, 2.0 times. So, you're certainly well above those thresholds, which you can issue debt easily under your covenants there. So, again, just graphically, you see the water and sewer revenue debt, as you notice, it does tail off pretty significantly. So, again, it's structured much like with the geo-debt as well. Any questions on kind of the direct debt of the city, the geo or the water and sewer? Okay. All right. Let me now talk about the debt issuances for Castle Hills, and these are contract, tax, and special assessment revenue debt. So, as you can see there, each district issues its own debt. So, 1B is issuing debt, it issues debt only for properties within 1B. 1G, which you just approved at the last council meeting, issued debt, new money debt for infrastructure solely within 1G. The security behind that debt is the contract revenues, which is the district's add-on tax, as well as the special assessment, again, within each district. So, in other words, there's no cross-collaboralization between the districts. The Castle Hills debt can be, they can issue new money bonds, or they can issue refunding bonds. That amortization is not set like your direct debt of 16 years, it's kind of set to match the district and what's needed at that time. Between the eight districts, so this is 1A through 1H, there's approximately $116.1 million outstanding in total, and I'll go into a little bit more detail in just a moment. One thing that is very key to point out here, none of this debt is a direct debt of the city. So, whenever the offering memorandum or the official statement, as the case may be, is put out to market and sell each series of debt, it clearly states to a potential bond investor that this debt has no claim on the city's direct taxing powers. So, again, it is solely those revenues associated with each district. Now, the districts issue new money bonds to fund infrastructure, namely the utilities and roads, so that's what we've seen for those districts. And then that last bullet point, the bond pricing is very different, because again, you are a AAA city and you're issuing, or the, beg your pardon, Castle Hills districts are issuing debt that is either not rated or is very, very lowly rated. And to give you an example, in 2015, whenever we issued water and sewer bonds, that was for a 16-year term, 2.9% was the average rate we paid on that debt. The 1G debt that you just approved, again, the last meeting was 6%. And again, that's not saying that 1G is a bad credit, it's not. It just has different risk associated with it that the city disowns. So, that's why you see, again, that significant difference in the capital cost. If you look at page eight here, this includes, again, all eight of the districts. And the one thing that's a little different that maybe you haven't seen in the past, 1A issued some debt, I believe it's back in 2009, through the Texas Water Development Board for water improvements. That is actually secured through a contract with the other districts and not a tax. So, that one's the only one that's a little bit different there. So, 1A, again, that 2.6 million was for water improvements. As you can see there, principal amount outstanding, this is as of 1215. The one thing on 1G, I did include, again, the debt that you just approved at the last meeting. You can see there, it also in the middle column, has a final maturity for the longest dated debt of each. Let me actually skip over one and go to underlying rating. You see there, not rated. Let's kind of take 1A out of the picture, because that one's completely different. In the instance of 1C, 1G, and 1H, we didn't go get a credit rating on that, because we most likely could not get an investment-grade credit rating. What does that mean? It means had we gone and actually gotten a credit rating, it would be a junk bond. And again, I just say that, I don't bring that up as a negative, that's just a fact. It would have been a junk bond, it would have been a non-investment credit rate, it would have been a sign. So, we sold those bonds without any credit rating, okay? Not necessarily a bad thing. Tons of districts do it in the state of Texas and all over the nation, all the time, so... But that's just a fact, that those could not get rated for whatever reason. You see there, the others, where there'd be 1B, 1D is the highest rated, A-, even at an A-, that is two full rating categories below the city's credit rating. So, again, just to give you an idea, 1D's pretty much built out residential, A- is the highest credit rating in any of those districts now, and then the triple B on the E, yeah. So, again, that affects, obviously, that cost of capital. And let me go to the authorized but unissued. The debt here represents, or the authorized but unissued represents only the new money portion. So, there may be refunding bonds, and there is, actually, in many cases, refunding bonds outstanding that the districts can issue. This is only, again, new money, which would be used to re-impress the developer. 1B and 1C have a small amount, about $8 million combined. 1G has $17.3 million after the issuance that you just approved. And then if you go to 1H, and actually if you'll turn with me to the next page, 1H now has $136 million that they just approved as far as a bond election in November. And this is under the joint utility contract, so if they were issuing that debt via the city, this is how it would be issued. One important thing to point out is you as a city cannot control whether or not they have a bond election, okay? You can't control that aspect. You can, however, control how they issue their debt, in the sense that if they want to issue their debt through you, which is what they've done, what I just showed on the previous page, you have to approve them, right? So, you have the power over whether you, as a council, approve their debt issuances or not. As you can see there, the subbullets, it shows you how much was voted for road, how much was voted for utility. 1B, whenever those PIDs were originally set up, each had a pit creation document, which you as council approved. And within that, there is a cap on the improvement in financing costs. The Texas Attorney General, whenever we get ready to sell and issue for any of those districts, looks at that original document. And just as an example, if the original document's at 50 million, they let you issue up to $50 million, okay? Since 1H voted this in November and increased that amount, you would have to, they would have to have an amendment to that amount that would have to be approved by council. And that's what I mean whenever I say that you have the ability to affect that. So, if you wanted to approve that, there would have to be an amendment to increase that amount. This would require, just like it did whenever the pit was originally set up, it would require a notice, it would require a public hearing, it would require an updated service and assessment plan. All of those things would have to be done, and council would have to approve that in order for them to issue that newly voted debt, okay? And again, that's if they issue it, just like they've issued all the debt that I talked about on the prior page. If you didn't approve that, they can still issue debt. It's via a different statute, it's via a different methodology, if you will, and that would all be via the fresh water supply districts. They can issue their tax debt. The one thing that's a little bit different, they do that, they have to adhere to what's known as TCEQ, or the Texas Center of Environmental Quality, I believe. They would have to issue it subject to TCEQ's rules, and there are certain rules that TCEQ have that are pretty strict as far as how much debt can be issued. The amount of assessed value you have to have on the ground before you can issue the debt, and that also limits how much debt can be issued. So, again, I bring that up just to let you know, as I'm providing information on these districts, that's what's going on in 1H. That is the newly voted authorization, that is, again, what council would need to do in order to increase that from those original PID documents. So, that is... Oh, no, you're fine, I've got one more slide here. Any questions on that before I go to the ratings?
Actually, could you go back two slides?
Sure.
Is that authorized but unissued inclusive of the next slide, or is that existing?
This, this goes into the next slide, so this is the new amount.
What is it without that? What is it currently without the new amount?
Well, the new amount, though...
It's 60 million minus 8.5, so...
Okay.
51.5.
Understood.
Then it's issued, so it's not...
Right.
I'm just curious where it was versus where it is now.
So, and that's a good point, and Ross, pardon me if I'm wrong, but the new voted authorization kind of supplants the old, is that correct?
Right.
That was the thought, is that that would... So, there is still old authorization left outstanding? The new takes the place of that and kind of wipes that out, if you will. So, we, it wouldn't be old plus new.
Got it.
It's just this new amount.
So, that's the total authorization?
Yes.
So, where is the 10 million that the city just recently approved for this?
That is actually, that was 1G, pit number five, so that's included in the 18.7.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on the pit portion? Okay. The last page here, talking about credit rating factors. This, of course, is a very important part of the plan of finance, and as we get to the actual issuance. And so, I've included the credits that I just went through, which is the first one there, the general obligation credit, again, AAA by both S&amp;P and Fitch. And to give you an idea, there's four main areas that the rating agencies look at whenever they're assigning a credit rating. And they certainly look at a number of factors, but these, again, are the four main areas. They look at your general economy, and so that takes into account economy here, also the state economy, as well as tax values, things of that nature. So, everything local, but again, on a state level as well. They look at your finances, they look at how you're performing to your budget, which one of the things that the city's always been very good about is you have budget surpluses. They look at, certainly, general fund balance has always been kind of the cornerstone of the finance aspect, but now they've actually shifted it to where they're looking at all your funds and trying to make sure that they take all those into account and not just specify that general fund. They look at management, and what falls under that is the policies that you have in place. For instance, if you have a general fund policy, which you do, long-term capital policy, things of that nature. They do like to see an annual review by council, and they like to see those policies approved by council, because it kind of, quote-unquote, locks those in, so to speak. So, that's what falls, again, under management. And then, of course, that last bullet point, debt and other liabilities. Other liabilities, pension and OPEB. One thing I would say, too, the rating agencies are very reactive, they're not proactive. So, as you saw what happened with Detroit, as you've seen what's happened with Chicago, Stockton, so the California cities, pension and OPEB is obviously a big focus of theirs right now. On the water and sewer revenue credit side, again, AAA by both S&amp;P and Fitch, they're looking at the system, they're looking at the size of it, they're looking at the age, they're looking at capital needs that you may have. Certainly have the same three items there, finances, management, debt, and other liabilities, just like with the geo side. And then the last one is legal provisions. And so, again, I went over debt service reserve fund, the strength of your rate covenants in the form of your coverage requirements, additional launch tests, things of that nature. One other component that I didn't list here that they also look at is if you have any EPA mandates or anything like that, if you have to fix your system because of an EPA or another regulatory agency, they certainly look very hard at that. The last one there, contract revenue and special assessment credit, as I talked about, we have A- at the top, going all the way to non-rated. So, the factors there, the assessed value, a lot of times whenever these districts are starting out, I guess G and H being the most recent, they're looking at how much assessed value is on the ground. In the case when they're doing the development of Castle Hills, there may not be a whole lot of development there, or if it is any value, it's typically in raw land before that starts. So, before your residences go on the ground, where your commercial goes on the ground, they're basically looking at, again, that assessed value. The diversification of the tax base, how much is residential, how much is commercial, things of that nature. Just to give a very quick example, if you look at the city in 2015, of your total tax base, about 35% of that's in single-family homes, 15% of that's in multifamily homes, about 25%, round the numbers, is in commercial and industrial. At 1B, the top 10 is made up of one commercial, that makes up less than 1% of the total tax base, and then nine residential, so it's obviously heavy residential. In 1G, which, again, you just approved, 70% of the tax base is in apartments and a shopping center. So, again, they're looking at that and looking at residences, stable, more stable, I should say, commercial, business can go bankrupt, you know, a business can be gone, so that's certainly, again, the diversification is something that they pay attention to. The finance structure, as I talked about, kind of contracts and tax and revenue assessment bonds, the legal provisions that are associated with the amount of debt on that plays heavily, and typically, again, whenever you see a startup like this, the amount of debt that you're going to put on it to build the infrastructure in order to lure the residential, to lure the commercial, sometimes is substantial in the early phases. And then the last one there is certainly development risk. And the nice thing I'll say about this is you have in Castle Hills a developer that has shown he can develop a quality product, and he's developed in economic time, it's probably one of the worst times we've ever seen, going back to the 20s and 30s. So, those are certainly positive factors that go onto the Castle Hills equation, so... So, that is my presentation. Any questions, whether it be about the ratings or anything you'd like for me to go back over as far as the geo revenue or the pit debt?
Jason, you might. So, on the agenda, out of nine, we have a revision to our policy statement. These are provisions that we worked with for Southwest, and they really are items that have been included in our last sales that we worked with the districts. It just puts them in writing, and these policies are filed with the rating agencies, so I think it's important that they see that we've set these type of standards and provisions.
Absolutely. One thing I'd say, too, is given the nature of pit debt, and given that it is lower rated or even non-rated in some cases, one of the things we've always tried to do is make sure that whenever it's sold, as much as we can intro, we want it going to sophisticated investors. We don't want it going to the quote-unquote "mom and pops" of the world, who maybe, quite frankly, see City of Louisville in the title, because the city issues the debt on behalf of those districts, and doesn't really do their homework to see that this is not a geo bond of the City of Louisville, this is a district within the ETJ of the city. So, that's one of the things, you see there, there are certain minimum size requirements, there's things of that nature, again, that we try to put in to safeguard not only the investors, but quite frankly, the city, as much as we possibly can whenever this debt's being issued. And certainly, if there's specific questions as far as that, we'd be happy to go with that. You'd be happy to? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, Gina's up next, and again, she's going to cover the new geo-bond program just approved, as well as some planned uses... as well as some planned uses of funding sources such as for the fire and crime control districts.
Okay, so the first thing, I think, I was already mentioned, this is very much so a preliminary staff recommendation on your CIB funding plan for the next ten years. We intend for it to evolve over the next ten years. This is our first step at it. So we wanted to give you all time to look at it and see what you like and what you don't like about it. The plan does call for three hundred and twenty-three million dollars in investment over the next ten years. And again, this is your capital investment separate from your operating budget, your annual ongoing expenditures. We've got that broken into ten different funding sources on this chart. You can see we have the GEO bond issuances of a hundred and thirty-five million, down to one million dollars in your crime control, which were used in part of the fund balance to pay for the radio system that we've talked about, funding primarily through tax anticipation notes. But we wanted to use a little bit of the fund balance from crime control to help offset some of that cost. So you've also got your utility bond issuances, general fund cash, utility cash. We've got four B bond, four B cash, your tax anticipation notes. We've included the fire services district here because we're playing for Fire Station Eight. And then we've got what we've called trail grants here. This two point seven million is actually only our match portion of the grants. The grants that we've either currently got or we expect to receive by 2018 equate to about fourteen point one million. And so this is just our match and our design costs related to those grants. And then the last was the crime control. The annual spending of that three hundred and twenty-three million breaks down like this. You can see that we have our annual investment varying between twenty-three million to forty-eight million annually. What I particularly wanted to point out on this chart is that our assumptions here were a four percent growth in our tax appraised value, which Jason mentioned a little bit about how we structure that debt program depends on how fastly our tax values grow over the next ten years, so that you can see changes in the plan based on what that growth actually becomes. We've used that because it's our average growth over the last ten years. We've also assumed a two million dollar increase in your general fund balance for the general fund cash portion of the plan. And again, that's based on our prior ten years average. We've assumed a three and a half million dollar investment in your utility building, I mean, your utility system, based on the last ten years of what we've actually spent on capital over the last ten years averaged. And then we've also got the assumption that Jason also mentioned that we would increase our tax rate next budget year by one cent. So those are the assumptions here. The last thing I wanted to mention, you'll see in the far, the twenty-four, twenty-five column, we've got seventeen million under the four B bond issuances, like the fifth line down. We actually, if you look at what we probably could program, it's closer to twenty-five million dollars. However, we haven't had as much discussion with you in terms of what we want to program in there. Right now, we know seventeen million is probably what we have. We definitely have other programs and projects that will come online, and that'll be flushed out, and you'll probably end up spending or issuing twenty-five million, closer to twenty-four, twenty-five. I wanted to quickly talk kind of how we prioritize these for your preliminary budget because it is a somewhat complicated process. We look at public input, we've gotten the Louisville 2025 input, we've got Blue Ribbon, all of our boards and commissions. Of course, we've gotten direction from you, we've talked about it at several council meetings. We've looked at our fund balance growth and where we think we will have money to program a project. We look at property tax revenue availability, how quickly that's growing, how critical a project is, comes into play. We may have thought we'd do something five years from now that all of a sudden we're doing now because something's changed in the project and it's made it more critical. Also, timing of external funding sources. Corporate drive is a great example, we've got regional toll revenue for that. It's an eighty-twenty match, and so when they want us to pony up our match, we need to have that ready. So that determines what we've got to plug in and where we need to plug it in. Even internally, we have different sources of funding, like the fleet building. We talked about being funded between general fund and utility fund. So that one, we've got to make sure that as we set aside funds for it in the general fund, it's coinciding with how we're funding it on the utility fund side, so that we have what we need at the time we need it. So that's another consideration. And then finally, your external partners, such as Autobots, you know, they may come into play and help us out with the nature center and out at Lila. And so that will impact the nature center that we might build and operate there. So all of these kind of are coming into play, and we're looking at those, we're evaluating them all the time. They change every year, you know, growth in one area may help us push forward a capital project, or a slowdown in the economy may help stall it. So we're, our intent is to bring this to you every year. You'll see changes in it. Projects may go higher in per, they might fall off, depending on what else comes available, so... Our intent will be that you'll see this several times. This, I'm definitely not going to go over all these projects, but this is how we have it laid out, we wanted to give you a chance to look it over by year. What I will point out here is that you can see where we have, like, for instance, we talked about the basement remodel, it's about eight down, I guess. Starting in 2017, we're trying to set aside money so that by 2022, we have that funded. Because at the same time, down a little bit further, you'll see the emergency operations center, we'll be issuing the debt in 2021 for that out of GEO bonds. So we want to coincide that we've got enough on the general fund side to do the entire basement, including the EOC in the basement at the same time.
Yeah, remember, it's split that way because the only thing that we took to the voters was the emergency operations center, so those are your GEO bonds, and the rest is coming from general fund cash. And the other note on the bottom, and you always see us saying this over and over about street projects, is that they can certainly change based on priorities. Items can come up, David, one phone call from our city engineer can change the world. So, and we always say that, you know, that this is not a promise to the people that live in these neighborhoods that these projects will be done during that timeframe because things change.
You could disconnect his phone?
I could, but...
I could probably walk back downstairs and...
He finds it somewhere.
The other thing that could change is that we can get a source of funding for a road that we didn't know we were going to have, and so all of a sudden, we're not missing bonds for that, we're going to use that other source, and now that frees it up to move something else, so... Good and bad reasons for changing the street projects. This one just shows utility projects by year. I will mention here on Timberbrook, you can see it's about the eighth one down. We're doing a lot of repairs in 2016, so you'll see we also, we actually planned for the subdivision, street repairs in the same year. If we're going to go in once and tear it up, we want to do it all at the same time. So that's another consideration to make sure we have those in the correct sequence.
And that's coordinating for all of those targeted neighborhoods.
This was an interesting way, I think, I want to ask to view it this way, that shows our annual projects by category. And this really just shows us the annual investment that we make in our basic infrastructure is every year. You can see our general facilities is occurring every year. Our streets, technology, and utility, which I feel are basic infrastructure, we're making a concentrated effort to make sure we implement that annually. You'll see parks and trails, we've got, I think, six years for trails and another five on parks where we're implementing something in the infrastructure in each of those years. We've also got only three years here for public safety, but you will recall, I mean, we've spent forty million annually on public safety on your operating budget side. The facility needs aren't as great in the public safety side, at least for right now. And so what we're able to do, that doesn't look like a lot of investment on public safety, but we're definitely taking care of them on the operating side. Land purchases is another item you'll see here, we've kind of got that front-loaded. One of the main reasons for that in, when you see a piece of property that you want, you can't wait five years and raise the money for it, you pretty much have to buy it when it becomes on the market. So we want to have that money in the bank and setting aside so that when we see property that we need to purchase, we can do so. So we've tried to kind of get that closer to the front of the plan so that we have it available throughout the plan.
Let's consider that some of that's land banking money, so we may go in and purchase it and then flip it. So that money, while it's just shown in the first three years, will be coming back to the city in later years.
So the rest of these slides, I'm actually not going to go over. What I've done is just include them alphabetically in case you have a particular project you're interested in seeing. You can just go in alphabetical order, find your project, you'll see what year we've got it financed in, the dollar amount that we are anticipating it will cost, and the funding source. So we've done that for all of your general plans, as well as for your utility projects alphabetically. And then the last way we did it was by funding source. So if you're mainly concerned with, well, what are we funding general fund cash out of? You can go to these lists and just find those separate projects. That's all I have on that, unless you'll have any questions.
I have a question.
So it's getting a little late to raise this question, but we've talked in the past about screening walls and the city's responsibility for the maintenance of those and the deterioration that many are undergoing.
Cash funded. We work cash fund that every year.
Okay.
So you do have a plan that's laid out, but it is not reflected in these numbers.
Right, our annual investment in the capital improvement program that you are, your operating side, is totally separate from this capital improvement program.
But it is an annual investment also. We could always spend more, and we try. I mean, that's one of those flexible issues where if revenues are good and we have a good fund balance, that may be exactly where we put that additional revenue. That's normally what we try to do, is to put a greater dollar amount into the infrastructure of the city.
Do we see that problem accelerating?
I think it is a constant. You know, as you build new neighborhoods, they go, new screening walls, those screening walls get old over time. So it's just a regular investment, the screening walls is kind of like your streets.
Okay. Any other questions?
There, I just might add, too, if you look at the slide number three, Gina, you might go back, and you look at the GEO bonds, so one thing you're seeing, I've had conversations with you over time on, and so Stamp is looking at what we thought was priority as far as building of these projects. So you see, one year is maybe the design, and then the next year the construction. For an example, your multi-generational recreation center, we're selling the debt for the design of that project this year, fifteen, sixteen. We're selling the construction dollars for that in seventeen, eighteen, and that's why that number shoots up to thirty-five million. So that is, we don't sell debt until May, that's when your design actually starts. And so at this point, we're looking at a construction manager at risk type of process. Bob's already in conversation and working with the architect. But it's going to be that timeframe, but by the time we get it designed and we start construction, you're looking at about a three and a half year project. So it is at the top, and it is what's driving that rate increase because you're selling that thirty-five million right up front. But it is getting that project, it was my interpretation that that was one of your main priorities, so we moved that up in the overall plan. In addition, you're in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you already had planned to build Fire Station Number Eight, and that's with your fire control dollars. The chief and I had a conversation, and we feel like if we build the new Station Three that same year, we may have some savings related to architectural costs and construction costs. So you see us building those fire stations in the same year.
What year?
That would be in sixteen, seventeen. So again, this is just an overview of the plan. We'll bring it back to you, I wanted to give you some time to take a look and make sure that our priorities are as you expected them to be. David certainly plays a role here also when he looks at what streets are highest priorities. Timberbrook is certainly a top priority, and you see that in the first year.
We're moving the rec center, that's about as quick as it could be done.
That's about as quick as it can be done.
Good.
It's a big project, and it's going to take some time. We've actually allocated, we've got a schedule that we've developed, and we've got public input, so you want, I think, go back to your residents and get some additional input. So it allows for those type of items.
We're going to explain it. So then?
Don, I see. We've also done something, I think this is new, in order to maximize and to make our dollars, our debt dollars, work a little bit more efficiently for us, we've separated each project between design money and construction money. And so we're funding the design when we need it, but we're not funding the construction that same year when it's needed the next year or the next. So we're trying to split that out so we don't issue debt and have it just sit around until that construction happens. So that's something new that we, that we see in that detail. Yeah.
Good, okay. Any questions for we look forward? Okay, let's go to the regular agenda. Under public hearings, item one, any questions? Item two, continued public hearing. Set agenda, item three. Item four. Okay, item five.
Go, jump back to item four, when do they plan on having that finished?
I'm sorry.
The actual road.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item four, the Wind Haven.
David, you want to talk about Wind Haven?
Okay, well, this is the first three phases of utilities out of the way. I would expect this, well, as a matter of fact, this has to be done relatively quickly. This has to be done during the winter season. So this will be finished by May, June, time frame. We're expecting to have the bid bridge, the actual railroad bridge structure, possibly later this year. And then we'll have to follow up with the underpass construction. This is a little bit unusual, they built the bridge almost underground, and then they come back and excavate the underpass. So there's three phases to this project, all which need to be did separately and sort of linear as opposed to overlapping. You know, this could very easily take the next three to five years to complete, just depending on how quickly we get those designs finished and get some of the other agencies to work with to put in plans.
Maybe twenty twenty-one, possible. It's on out there.
It's on out there.
Big project.
But it is moving.
Yeah.
And it's really good to see this underground part moving forward. It's been a true challenge.
And it should help five forty-four and the Sam Rayber.
Hopefully.
Okay. Let's go back to five, anything has, anybody has anything on that? Six. Seven, again, Wind Haven, two. Eight.
This is the North Port Race Building off of I-35. So you did see, we talked with you about this back in April. Sometimes it takes time to work through the issues with the company, but now you see it moving forward, and that's really a great use of that.
Good. Any questions on that, anybody? Okay, item nine.
Yeah, never mind, I'm sorry.
Okay. On the regular hearings, item ten.
Can you give us any update from meetings y'all had?
And we had a meeting on the fourteenth with hoteliers that were at our last meeting, the last council meeting, and we discussed various issues. I think what you might hear tonight, if they're here, one of the concerns was certainly with the number of stories. That's to be the item of most concern to them. I think they would have liked us to make a minimum requirement that it be five stories. What we have, what we're presenting to you is four stories, and then five stories is one of the option areas where you select two out of the four. We have had conversations with some of the quality hotels, such as the Hilton, and they do four stories. And so we think it's problematic to move it to five stories as a minimum. But there may still seem some... may still seem some push on that. We did increase the room count from 100 to 120, and we also pushed out, and this is one of their requirements, a request, that all facades be 80% direct or stone. So that was one thing that they wanted that we did add. So I think in a couple of ways, we did meet their requirements, but I think you may hear a little bit about this story. You might hear some more about meeting rooms. The group that we met with about half felt like we needed additional meeting room space and the other half really realized that that wasn't, was somewhat wasted space. So is that a fair summary, Nika?
Yes.
On the meeting rooms, would it be any problem? I forget where it falls in the, whether it's an option or not, but I think it's 1,500 square feet.
That's correct.
Would it be any problem with making, putting the language of minimum 1,500 in there? How would that be?
I think so. Go ahead.
Question is, a minimum within the requirements, not as an option?
Well, no, wherever it's sat in there, I don't have it on my screen, but if we just add the one word, minimum 1,500.
Yes.
Would that be any concern to anybody?
No, because I'm not under where it is in the options, that is a minimum. 1,500 is a minimum, but if you choose that as an option.
But it's an option. It's not a minimum requirement. It depends on what.
If you choose it, that is the minimum.
Yeah.
And they could go 5,000 or 10,000 if they wanted to.
But it's not, but it's not standard requirement. You know, it's without that choice.
But in other parts of that, on this item, you have stated minimum. So that's why I was asking about why, I mean, is there a problem putting the word minimum there when it's in other areas as well? This, whatever it is, the minimum, whatever.
No, not at all. It's just, I thought we had, we had it in the outset. I thought we had.
I don't think it says a minimum.
And it's an option, I think, that include the word minimum as part of the option.
As part of the option, yeah. Yeah, it says a minimum of 1,500 square feet in the ordinance.
In the ordinance?
Yes. And so as an option, it is listed there. I think we're covered.
But on the, on the backup material, it didn't say minimum.
We might not be clear on that.
Yeah. In the ordinance, it says minimum.
Yes, sir.
That's fine. Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Anything else on 10? And then we skip over to last page, the additional item number 12.
Choose your bed, bath and beyond agreement, economic development agreement. I have asked Nika to make some public comments about this when we go out into open session just because, not that we're not in open session, we are, but out in the council chambers because I think it is of interest to everyone. This is a major economic development agreement, and so we'd like to walk through some of the details.
Can you give, when you're president, can you give, because there was so much public interest in Mary Kay, can you kind of give a comparison of why this is considerably different and economic benefits are much longer and more significant because the public may not see the difference?
E-commerce.
So it's not just another warehouse?
It's not just another warehouse. It's e-commerce. So, you know, bottom line, for all sales, internet sales in the state of Texas, we get the internet, we get the sales tax, or items bought online and delivered to Texas, we get the sales tax. That's major.
Yep.
I'm not taking on Mary Kay, but it's just that that makes such a public splash that I think it makes for a different person.
This doesn't make a public splash.
Yeah, this should make you much bigger public.
Donna, do you want to make a comment on the closed session? I don't know if you've already told me or do that out for me.
I will just say that we won't have any items for executive session tonight.
Okay.
All right.
Just a kiss of death.
Yeah, don't say that.
That's it. We'll.
Don't jinx it.
Re-convene at seven o'clock in the regular chamber.
Yeah, I love to get the stars. It's really not a favorite. Favorite sports to watch. It's so fast. I just love it. You don't feel like you're waiting for any of your tournament plays. Basketball's a lot that way, too. But basketball seems too easy to me. So tall and just, the hockey's, just to do all that on the, on the sky.
Seven o'clock, we'll convene the meeting of the city council. We're going to start off the invocation by myself and pledge to the American and Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Tierney. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation, overview of Louisville Lake Dam status by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And we have Mr. Tim McAllister.
Good evening, Mayor.
Could you give us your address for the record, please?
Yes, yes, sir. My name is Tim McAllister. My address, you said, correct. My address is 1512 Golf Club Drive, Lantana, Texas, 76226.
Why don't you pull that microphone a little bit closer to you? That'll be good right there.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to extend a very large sincere thank you to the city for helping us host a meeting at very, very short notice, brought lots of folks in from both Denton and some of Dallas counties, and I appreciate that. You know, what I came here today to assure y'all of is that, yes, we do have some items that we've been discussing throughout the last several years, maintenance items within the dam area, but we are in absolutely not in any imminent danger of failure, as many felt we were after, after an article that was written a couple, two Saturdays ago. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. There any questions? I just thank y'all for getting right on top of it and our city managers brought us up to date on, on all the things y'all been working on and just keep watching the dam every day as y'all do and have been for 50 some odd years.
Yes, sir, we'll do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We're down to item D, public hearings. Number one, public hearings, consideration of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for Hebron 121 Station, which is bounded by the DGNO Railroad to the east, Timber Creek to the west, State Highway 121 to the south, and Lakeside Circle to the north. Administrative comments. The original concept plans consist of 1,751 multifamily units throughout the development with 20,000 square feet of office retail space on the ground floor. The proposed amendment adds an additional 124, 24 units, changes the building types, reduces the office retail square footage, and adds a fitness center and restaurant P&amp;Z recommended approval. Let me put a period there. P&amp;Z recommended approval. Recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed concept plan amendments as set forth in the caption above. And we do have Mr. Elvio Bruny with Riverside DPH, if there's any question. Nika, do you have a presentation on this or anything?
I don't, Mayor, but if you'd like me to, I can, but.
If anybody has any questions right now for Nika, we can, we can have her give us anything. If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion to move, to close by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay, motion to approve.
Okay.
And we have a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion?
Councilman Tierney.
Excuse me, I have a Councilman Tierney on the second.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas, in order to amend the concept plan for Hebron 121 Station, a mixed-use development on an approximately 90.08 acre tract of land out of the A.J. Hitchcock survey, abstract number 614, the McKinney and Williams survey, abstract number 936, and the BBB and CRR Company survey, abstract number 144, bounded by the DGNO Railroad to the east, Timber Creek to the west, State Highway 121 to the south, and Lakeside Circle to the north, zone mixed-use 90 district, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change to amend the concept plan therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, it's a continued public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from light industrial and agricultural open space to mixed-use 90 district, on approximately 143 acre tract of land bounded by Hebron Parkway to the north, State Highway 121 to the south, and the DGNO Railroad to the west, and the Elm Fork Trinity River to the east. Administrative comments. The concept plan shows a four commercial building fronting Hebron Parkway and a hotel and conference center with approximately 208,000 square feet adjacent to the DCTA Passenger Rail Station. The remainder of the property lies within the 100-year flood plain and will be used to create a lake with networks of trails, recreational features, and nature-focused amenities. P&amp;Z recommended approval. Recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. And again, we have Mr. Elvio Benny to, that is in support of this and is available for questions. Nika, do you have anything to add to this one?
Mayor, I just wanted to add that this is an extremely significant area and, and a project is changing light industrial zoning to mixed-use 90, which is in compliance with several of our plans, including the I-35 redevelopment plan and the focal point within the Vision 2025. So this is a concept plan that's going to be attached to this area. It incorporates extending the green actually from I-35. So this is where the green can start and extend all the way up to, to 121, and again, providing significant office and other uses in this general area. I also wanted to add, in addition to Mr. Bruny with the Hoffines Development, Mr. Philip Hoffines is also here tonight, if council would like to ask any questions or if Mr. Hoffines had anything to add to the project.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Taffad, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Who was the second there?
Either way.
Down there somewhere. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as set forth?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Ferguson.
This, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas, by rezoning an approximately 143 acre tract of land out of the J.R. Mendera survey, abstract number 28, the W. Cantwell survey, abstract number 290, the J. Chounding survey, abstract number 242, the H. Harper survey, abstract number 605, the Haynes-Bouillon survey, abstract number 626, the A.J. Hitchcock survey, abstract number 614, and the McKinney-Williams survey, abstract number 936, bounded by Hebron Parkway to the north, State Highway 121 to the south, the DGNO Railroad to the west, and the Elm Fork Trinity River to the east, from light industrial district zoning and agricultural open space district zoning to mixed-use 90 district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion? We approve the ordinance.
We did that.
Thank you very much. It's been a long day already. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Down to E., visitor citizens forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I don't have any cards. Anybody wish to speak? Okay. F., consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted on with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. And I don't have any request, anything to be pulled. Councilman Daniel.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Daniel, second by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Down to item 10, regular hearings. It's a tableled item, consideration of an ordinance amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter 6, Article 9, Section 6-182, Hotel Motel Extended Stay Facilities by replacing, repealing and replacing the section in its entirety by adding requirements for new or modified hotels, motels, and extended stay facilities. Administrative comments. The proposed amendments to the current Hotel Motel Extended Stay Facilities regulations adjust the standard to be more in line with common amenities offered with new high-quality select service hotels. The amended regulations are also expected to increase opportunities for the development of new hotel brands in Louisville. Recommendation is that the city council approve, approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney.
Mayor, I have no problems and I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any further discussion on that? Okay, counselor?
This is an, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter 6, Article 9, Section 6-182, Hotel Motel Extended Stay Facilities, by deleting the entire section and replacing it with a new Section 6-182, adding requirements for new or modified hotels, motels, and extended stay facilities, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, consideration of an ordinance approving an update to the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5. City council authorized 10.95 million combination contract revenue as special assessment utility system. utility system bonds on December 7, 2015. An update to the service plan and assessment role must be considered and approved by the city council. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with the related information concerning the indebtedness to be incurred and the assessment role. Recommendation is that the city council consider and approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Okay. Councilman Gilmore.
I approve as presented.
Second.
Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, updating the assessment service plan and assessment role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Down to item 12, approval of an economic development agreement by and between the city of Lewisville and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Inc., and authorization for the city manager or her designate to execute the agreement. Administrative comments: Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Inc. is leasing 799,460 square feet at the Majestic Airport Center located at 2900 South Valley Parkway. The project includes a minimum of 23 million in capital investment and 19 million in business personal property investment for an e-commerce operation. In addition, in order to qualify for the sales tax grant, the company must produce a minimum of 30 million in annual sales the first three years and up to 120 million in annual sales the final years of the agreement. This agreement calls for the city to provide a startup grant, cap grant, real, business, personal property, inventory tax grants, and a sales tax grant is outlined in the agreement. Recommendation is that the city council approve the agreement. Councilman Ferguson.
I'll move to approve as presented, but I believe we have a presentation, don't we?
We have a presentation on it? I knew you were gonna speak sometime, Nika. Go ahead.
But the motion's on the table, so we'll listen.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor and council, this is a very exciting day for Lewisville and certainly for me as the Economic Development Director, because these projects are very far and few in between. An e-commerce facility is extremely competitive, and locating one in your community or even in the region is not something that happens every day. So we are very excited to have this project in Lewisville. Just a little background, of course, the facility is for Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that, as you know, have several just brick-and-mortar stores in the area with great sales, but this facility will be primarily all the internet sales in the state of Texas that will ship out of the facility, and so the significance of this project is the long-term sales tax revenue that will be coming to the city of Lewisville. The agreement is for 20 years, so hopefully for 20 years, the numbers will crank up, and it will, again, definitely a very long-term revenue generator for the city. The project came to us in April, actually, of this year, so it takes a long time to negotiate an agreement such as this, and we were among, at the time when we first started talking with them, we were among 69 cities in the whole United States, so we were one of 69 cities. Then, after several months, the cities fell off, and we got reduced to about 12 cities in the nation. Then after that, there were three states in the nation, and then later on, we were competing with two other sides of our neighboring cities, which, again, makes it very difficult because a lot of us bring almost very similar incentives to the table and very similar in terms of our location being proximity to the airport and all the other benefits that the Dallas-Fort Worth region has. So then at that time, that's when you really become competitive and, to some degree, aggressive because everybody wants one of these facilities. So again, congratulations is to you, and also the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond team and the Majestic team wanted me to specifically say a lot of thanks to the city manager and city attorney for diligent work on the agreement. It took them many, many hours to get it through. So the numbers that you're looking at, these are minimum numbers for the agreement. If they don't meet the terms of the agreement, in the minimums, the agreement is basically the incentives that are within the agreement is not going to be applicable. So with the minimum numbers, the significant revenue is going to be also not only to the general revenue of the city, the general fund, but also our special fund, which basically those special funds are set aside separately. None of the incentives that are applied to this company will be applied to those special funds. So basically, the special funds will get the full revenue that's becoming in. So during the term of the agreement, with the very, very conservative numbers, the sales tax for the parks and library will be over 4.1 million dollars. For public safety, another 4.1 million dollars. For DCTA, they get a huge windfall at 8.2 million dollars. And in general, for the whole city, we have over 16.5 million for the 1% general fund, but also in addition, all the revenue from the real property taxes and personal property taxes, because, again, this is an extremely large facility with a lot of investment, over 50 million dollars investment in minimum in real property and business personal property in addition to the facility that's already on the ground at 45 million dollars. So this is well over 100 million dollars investment in real property. So again, with conservative numbers, those revenues to us over the term of the agreement is 31 million dollars. And the sales numbers in the agreement are, is just they're going to ramp up and move up in the future. We are comparing it to some of the other similar facilities in the metroplex, and those numbers are just off the chart for sales.
Would you touch on one other thing, possibility of new jobs and employment?
Absolutely. This is also a fairly large job generator. They're going to have about 600 to 1,000 people at this facility, depending on the time of the year. So Christmas time, you'll probably see over 1,000 people working at that facility.
Exciting.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Okay, Councilman Ferguson, you have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I do.
We have a second by Councilman Gilmore. Thank you. Councilman Gilmore, any discussion? Get reading here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Want to commend the Economic Development Department for working on this, legal, worked a few hours on this one, and the city manager's office did a real good job, and it's been going for the last few weeks quite a bit, so, and it just came together right here at Christmas when Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is hopefully having a real good year, so. We're down to reports. We have the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee Local Government Code Semiannual Report for your review, and then, Nika, start with you. Have you had anything else to add? Haven't had to work on anything lately. Okay. Bob? Tim? Chief? We gotta talk about the lake.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you, the last report will be a good one, as it's been a very mild summer, given the floods, but for us in the water business, we'll take flood over drought any time, but no, the lake is still five feet over conservation, and I think it's gonna be good going forward, and the spring will start, no matter what happens the rest of the winter, the spring will start with a full lake.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Gina? Morden? Eric? Steve? Councilman Daniels?
I want to remind everybody again about recycling your Christmas tree. It may be a little bit early, you haven't taken it down yet, but when you do, you can take it out to Lake Park, follow the signs, and recycle your Christmas tree, and the best part is, is afterwards, you can take a bag, take a bucket, whatever, and go out there and get some free mulch, you know, to put out in your yard, so. And while we're talking about Christmas, I can't say enough about the number of comments I've had personally and through social media regarding the Ferguson Plaza and the great job and just the festive spirit that it does, and Parks has done a great job in decorating, and it looks fantastic for the season, and I continue to hear nothing but compliments, so.
On the tree, Bill, are they gonna be open this weekend, Saturday and Sunday?
I believe so.
Anybody know?
Yes.
Actuated the trees?
It's open to the public. It's out in the north parking lot at the soccer complex, so it's always open.
Okay. Okay, good.
You're getting rid of your tree already?
I don't have to worry about the tree this year. If I did have one, it'd be an artificial one anyway. Councilman Tierney?
Carol, thank you for 37 years to the city of Lewisville. We're gonna miss you.
You're very welcome. I certainly appreciate the support of council all these years. It's been very nice having that support, and you guys take interest in public services, and that's unusual, a lot of cities, that's just that department out there that makes things work, but nobody wants to talk about it, but I really truly appreciate your support.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, happy Festivus.
For the rest. Councilman Gilmore?
Well, if you're gonna get those two, I'm gonna get happy winter solstice because that's today. But I also like to remind everybody that the kids have been out of school, and you'll have Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and then you're gonna be looking for things to do on Saturday because you're gonna be stir-crazy. So Saturday, December 26, 9:00 a.m., is the Christmas Bird Count for Kids at LELA. So go to lela.org, L-E-L-A dot org, and you can find out a little bit more about the Christmas bird count and get 'em out of your hair for a little bit. Merry Christmas.
City manager, go ahead.
I also want to tell Carol, thank you so much for 37 years of dedicated service. I always say that Carol is the person that if I really wanna get a straight answer, straightforward, and she doesn't beat around the bush, she's always the one I go to. She's dedicated to the city, to this organization, and I personally will miss her greatly.
Councilman Ferguson?
Certainly appreciate it. I won't miss all the council meetings, but some of these are the people here I certainly will miss. I was teasing them, said, two Monday nights from now, I'll be watching Monday night football thinking about you guys.
We'll call.
Councilman Ferguson?
So Carol, I'll start with you. I will really miss seeing you. I'll miss the conversations we've had. I'll miss learning from you. You've taught me a lot. You've been very useful at so many critical times you probably don't even know, and I think we've always had a great time exchanging things, so I'll miss that. I'll miss seeing your face sitting there, but, you know, that time comes, and I'm happy for you, so make the best of it. It's the last meeting of the year, so I want to say thank you to everybody on the staff because that same message really goes to all of you. It's been a great year, in my opinion, at the city of Lewisville, and what really makes it is the staff, and each one of you, when I work with you, it's always, I'm always impressed at what you know, I'm always impressed at how well you all work with each other together, I'm impressed with what you can accomplish. You're just a great bunch of people to have at my back. So I want to thank every single one of you for all you do and for a great year for the city, because more than anybody, it's, we sit up here and say yes or no, but the real work goes on behind the scenes, and that's done by you folks, so thank you for all you do. Certainly want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, and I think the common message that they all should share is peace on earth, goodwill towards men, so that's the thought I'll carry into the holidays. I do have an MCL Grand Report, by the way, so I have to go on for a minute longer, but I didn't want to say that. So MCL Grand, we have live performances, A Not So Blue Christmas, December 22. It's actually a sold-out benefit show, so I'm not sure why it's on my list, but we'll point out that it's a sold-out show, so that's a good thing. Beauty and the Beast Junior, January 7 through the 10th, presented by Frisco Youth Theater. Will and Crystal Yates on January 10. This is part of the Black Box Songwriter Series, which has taken off like a rocket, so, and well worth going. Public events, I always have the Friday acoustic jam sessions. I don't have any notes that they're not doing it Friday night, but I suspect maybe not this Friday night. Art exhibits, Retrospective and More is in the gallery, the main gallery, through January 4, and Toyland is in the north gallery through the same date, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you, councilman, for all y'all do.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd just like to add my congratulations to Carol. I can't see her, but I appreciate everything she's done for us, keeping us in line, providing us all the information that we needed to operate, and I wish her the best going into retirement and enjoy her life going forward. I'd also like to thank the city staff. Every member of the staff has helped me at one point or another, as I'm sure they have the other council members, and I, for one, and for all of us, appreciate everything you've done, and I hope you have a wonderful and merry holiday.
Counselor? City secretary? Officer, thanks for your service through the community, and thanks for being here tonight. I don't think there's anything else for the closed session tonight. Your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion to adjourn and a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.